Councilmember Barlow?
Here.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Furrow?
Here.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Here.
Councilmember Reskey?
Here.
Mayor Tosco?
Here.
Please rise for pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, and in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda?
Yep.
You're taking a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Barlow, supported by McLean, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. You have an agenda. In your packet, you have the minutes from the April 8, 2024 regular meeting. Any additions or corrections on that?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Brim, supported by Reskey, to approve the minutes of April 8, 2024 regular meeting. Any discussion?
I didn't find any meetings about regular on April 8, 2024.
I hate Apple.
That gave us all a laugh, bro.
Roll call. Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
She said here.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Reskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Mayor Tosco?
Here.
Public hearings, we have none. Public comment. Anybody like to get up and speak? I'll give you three minutes. Tell me who you are. Okay. Formal recognition and presentations. We have Dave Hatfield here tonight, our county commissioner.
Good evening. Al, can I use your phone? Maybe it can give my report.
Yeah, sure. It's not my fault.
Pleasure being here. I am particularly glad that I was able to attend the workshop because there are a lot of common themes when it comes to funding. And, yeah, just like the county does not operate in a vacuum, the city does not either. We've both got some significant financial challenges ahead of us. I hope that we can do a good job of cooperating and coordinating because if we don't, we could be hitting the electorate with too many millages in too short a timeframe. And, yeah, that I don't think would bode well for either entity or any of the other entities in the county that are out there that are also going to be dealing with millage requests. So, we have challenges and hopefully we can face them together and make a good case to the electorate. Speaking of which, one of the things on our agenda tomorrow will be approving the COA millage renewal. While that is a renewal, it will be a renewal with a restoration of what's been lost to the Headley Amendment during the five-year term of that most recent millage for senior services. One thing that I do want to point out, there are some opponents of that millage out there that are trying to make the case that that millage is going toward the new building. That is absolutely not the case. That new building will be funded with a combination of county allocation and charitable contributions to COA. We are reasonably confident that there will be no millage necessary to fund the construction of that building. So, the renewal that's coming up will be strictly for programming, and it's an expansion of the programming that already goes on up there that's continuing to, you know, prove its worth to the senior citizens of our community. Otherwise, we've been dealing with some fiscal challenges, dealing with software, once again, like we so often here at the county as well as here. You know, there are a lot of things that have been pushed down the road, and there comes a time to pay the price. And significant upgrades to our software system falls into that category. In addition to that, tomorrow we'll be accepting the acquisition of a piece of land referred to as Metcalf Lake, which is down in the southeastern corner of the county. That's a piece of property that was gifted by the owner to the Battle Creek Schools. They have not been able to make effective use of it and are looking to now transfer that to Berry County so that we can make that part of our parks. It's coming essentially without cost, but there will be some relatively minor costs incurred as we secure the property and improve road access to it. But it's going to be a real asset to the whole community. In addition to that, we've also recently approved some funding for trail additions and improvements. The trails, the trail network continues to expand, and like so many things, it's a real county asset, but it's something that attracts a lot of people in from outside the community and helps bring business here. On a personal note, I have filed a petition to run for reelection to another term on the county commission. I certainly owe most of you, many of you, all of you, some gratitude for your assistance in helping me gain election two years ago, and hope I can count on it again. And hope that you consider yourselves to have been adequately served. If not, I hope to hear from you. Thank you.
Any questions today before he sits down?
What was the name of that piece of property?
Metcalf Lake.
Metcalf Lake?
Yes.
Could I say I saw a presentation on that? It's an absolutely beautiful.
Oh, it is.
Beautiful area of property.
It's pristine, I think is the only way to.
Beautiful lake on it.
Yeah. And beautiful woodlands. You know, it'll be a great site for some small trails, non-motorized uses on the lake. But there are some improvements that are going to have to be made in order to make access to that a little more reasonable. Right now, I think the primary use of it is Marson. If you're looking for Friday evening parties, primarily attended by high schoolers, probably a good place to go.
Any other questions?
If not, thank you.
Okay. Items for action by unanimous consent. Item A, accept donation from the Baum Family Foundation, the amount of $50,000 for Hastings Live performances at Thornapple Plaza. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brim, supported by Barlow, to accept the donation from the Baum Family Foundation, the amount of $50,000 for Hastings Live performance in Thornapple Plaza. Any comments from anybody?
Thank you very much.
We'll be sending out a letter of appreciation. You know, we don't take it for granted that the Baum Family does this every year, and the city of Hastings and the community really appreciates it. And so, there'll be a letter going out to the family. Okay, no discussion, roll call. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Reskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor Tosco?
Yes.
Item B, receive place on file, 20 invoices totaling $516,528.77, as detailed in your attachment. Do I hear a motion to approve? Place on file?
I'll make that motion.
Support. Motion by McLean, supported by Jarvis, to receive place on file, 20 invoices totaling $516,528.77, as detailed in the attachment. Discussion? Roll call. Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Reskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Tosco?
Yes.
Items of business. Item A, consider approval of a letter of support for USDA grant being submitted by the Berry Community Foundation as presented. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Reskey, supported by Furrow, to approve a letter of support for USDA grant being submitted by the Berry Community Foundation as presented. Any questions? Roll call. Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Reskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Mayor Tosco?
Yes.
Item B, consider approval of a proposal for Riverside Cemetery and Memorial Phase One Project Services by MCSA Group Incorporated, an amount of $18,270. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Support.
Okay, motion by Nesbit, supported by McLean, to approve a proposal for Riverside Cemetery and Memorial Phase One Project Services for MCSA Group Incorporated, an amount of $18,270. Discussion? Any questions?
Yes. Do we have a picture of it or sketch or anything? See what it looks like?
We've shown that. If you want to try to find?
Um, if you can.
Well.
Dan can.
Dan's pretty fast. Let him look it up.
The previous packet would.
That was in.
We, did we have something on our, on the cemetery board meeting?
Yes.
So, did you go to that?
I have access to that. I don't have access to that. Member of the council meeting maybe?
You can also email it out after the meeting.
Was it this year?
It's acceptable.
I thought it was 2012. No, it's 2023.
Sorry to interrupt, Dr. Ken Merriman. To demonstrate my extreme ignorance, what does MCSA stand for?
It's the name of the engineering firm.
Okay.
Uh, what's, what's the name of it? MC Smith is what it used to be.
It's BM C Smith.
MC Smith Associates. Are they the ones doing the street skate project?
The main street.
I didn't want to show my ignorance. I thought that's who they were. Thank you. Got it. Better? It's kind of shaped like a snail. That picture's kind of turned the wrong direction. There you go. It's going to be up on the hill, that's, that south, that westerly hill where the last driveway's at, it's going to be up on top of that hill, and that's kind of what it'll look like. And that's standing, if you're standing there looking, you'd be looking to the east, right?
Yep, believe so. And this is the, the full we built out design. Where we have funding available for Phase One right now, which is kind of the very middle part there with the benches. So, that's going to be what Phase One is going to construct, and then we would expect there to be some fundraising for future phases which can be added in.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Nesbit, supported by McLean, to approve the proposal for Riverside Cemetery Memorial Phase One Project Services by MC Smith Group Incorporated, in the amount of $18,270. No further discussion? Roll call. Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Reskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Mayor Tosco?
Yes.
Item C, consider scheduling a public hearing to accept comment regarding the fiscal year 2024-2025 operating budget and millage rates on Monday, May 13, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Reskey, supported by Jarvis, to schedule a public hearing to accept comment regarding the fiscal year 2024-2025 operating budget and millage rates on Monday, May 13, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Any discussion? Roll call. Councilmember Nesbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Reskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Furrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Mayor Tosco?
Yes.
Staff presentations and policy discussions, we have none. City manager's report.
So, a few updates for you tonight. First of all, the fish hatchery restroom building project is now out bid. So, I'm going to set some up for the room. Bids are due back on May 7th, so I'm hopeful that we'll have something to present to you for our next council meetings since we have an extra week between council meetings. I did receive a handful of allocations for the clerk treasurer position. There are a couple of people that I'd like to do some phone interviews with to kind of screen them a little bit more. Some information doesn't come through the resume very well before deciding whether or not to invite them for a full interview. So, I'll keep you advised of that process. I also wanted to remind everyone that if you are running for election this year, nominating petitions are due tomorrow at 4:00 here at City Hall. If you have any questions, please contact Amy Hubbell, the deputy clerk, because she was helping to oversee that process. And today is Chris's last council meeting with us, so I wanted to thank him for his wonderful dedication to this community too, and let him know that we wish him well. Not too well, though. Wish him staying, but. Thank you.
End it? Okay, in your city manager's report, you have Police Chief Boulder's monthly report. And as always, do you have any questions for Dale? Because I think he probably wants to get up and talk.
I would like to. So, while it's fresh in everybody's mind, this past weekend, Berry Roubaix. So, I just wanted to let you guys know, you know, the DPS, the police department, the fire department, the all-city staff, everyone did an amazing job. Lot of people in town. Obviously, as you guys well know, 5,200 bicyclists. I couldn't begin to tell you how many people were in town. If any of you guys were in around town, you could probably, you know, add a few numbers to that 5,200. You know, I had great support from my officers. The entire off-shift volunteered to work. Great support from DPS staff, and also, like I said, and the city workers. Working with Scott and Matt from the Berry Roubaix, they've always been great to work with. You know, obviously, we had some minor hiccups there here and there, minor inconveniences for some people in and around the city, whether they lived in the city or visitors to the city. But, you know, I'd just like to point out, you know, last year alone, $38,000 was donated back to Berry County as a whole. Not sure what that number will be, you know, this year, but awesome event. And I, you know, there were a few small incidences out in the county, but nothing huge, nothing drastic. So, we actually look forward to seeing this happen again next year. So, but with that being said, it was a long day, you know, for everybody that was involved. But the weather was, it was good, but it wasn't the greatest. But it was just, it was a little chilly, but a little bit of snow a couple times. But again, it was a good event. The last thing I want to point out, you know, and somebody that usually, and it's kind of my fault that I haven't, I don't mention too often, he is in my report, each month of the report, and that's our code compliance officer, Frank Gesensik. You know, I'll tell you guys right now, that guy is beat up. He is beat up, probably worse than my police officers. Not by all, but throughout the week, he has his fair share of, you know, people that don't like what he has to offer, so to speak. Frank operates under, under me, and he does what I ask of him. So, with that being said, you know, years ago, we changed the name of his position from code compliance to, or I'm sorry, code enforcement to code compliance. We asked people in the city to comply. You know, we educate them as much as possible, as much as they allow us to. And with that being said, I'm, I come from the spot to where I like to make personal contact with people. And that means I require Frank to walk up to somebody's door and knock on their door and have a personal conversation with them. Sometimes, you know, to put a name with a face and, you know, being able to explain certain things, you know, gets us a little bit further than, than what it may be just sending somebody a letter. You know, lately, I think there's a little bit of confusion. I know you guys have probably been contacted by your constituents in regards to how this takes place. Well, at this point in time, I still plan on having Frank make contact with people. I feel that the city of Hastings, you know, and where we come from and the roots that we have is personal. And making contact, and yes, sometimes it's not the funnest thing to, you know, walk up to somebody and ask them whether it be to mow their lawn or to move a vehicle off their lawn, something to that effect. But again, we're asking for cooperation, and we always are there to offer a solution. So, but again, you know, Frank does a really good job in this city, keeping up with the ordinances that have been passed by the council. And, you know, it's, it's a tough job, and I just really want to stand up here tonight so you guys can hear it and whoever may be watching. And I want to thank Frank for the job that he does. So, I think that's about all I really wanted to say tonight, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to see if I can answer it for you.
I just have, excuse me, I have to say that I agree with you 100% on Frank. Frank gets accused of sneaking around, looking for problems. I think most of his probably things he checks on or complains to the neighbor that want to, you know, tattle on their next-door neighbor and so on and so forth. Frank doesn't go around sneaking on people. He's an awesome gentleman, so I agree with that 100%.
Thanks, sir.
I was, I was at the Berry Roubaix Saturday. You saw me.
Yes.
I was real impressed with all your officers and the volunteers and the DPS. At one time, I took a picture of all you guys standing on the corner when things started. You guys were well organized, things went really smooth. I stood there at, from quarter to six, or quarter after six in the morning until seven o'clock to watch the 400 bicycles take off for the 100 mile, or that was, that was kind of neat. You know, we, in the past, we've got up in the, in the bucket of the fire truck, you know, had the flag flying and all. We had a little hiccup this year, it didn't happen. I think next year, I talked to the chief, we're probably going to move the fire truck over on, on Broadway where it's at the start of the race instead of behind where they're starting, so. But other than that, I think it went great. But any other questions, Odile?
Thank you.
Okay, in your report, you have City Clerk Beaver's report. Anything to add to your report, Chris?
Nothing to add to the report.
Well, I for one, want to go on record, I really enjoyed the last couple of years working with you. I'm, you know, I'm still not, I'm still going to try to get you to stay, but I, I think the city, you did the city a service by coming here. Excellent person. You, everybody downstairs is working great together because of you, I think, and we're going to miss you. And I wish you the best of luck.
I'd just like to add, I'm not sure I'm deserving of those comments, but I appreciate them. And the success in this position really depends on the people you work with and who work for you in this position. And I just need to mention Francie and Amy and Allison and Betty and Marie, who all work on the first floor. They all do multiple things all day long. They've been great to work with. They're going to be a great resource for the excellent person that's going to get in this position. So, I, public services and calling, I've enjoyed my time here, and I've enjoyed working with you all and all the department heads. So, thank you for those kind words.
It's like I said, though, you got them all to work together. And that, the, the experience and the know-how is there. Your leadership brought it out. You know, I think, I think we've utilized that before, before you came here, but I think you really brought it out in them. So.
Thanks, Chris.
Committee Development Director King's report. He's hiding back there. Anything to add, Dan?
Unless there's questions, I have nothing else to add.
Any questions to Dan? Okay, reports and communication. In your packet, you have the March 13, 2024 Riverside Cemetery Preservation Advisory Board Minutes. Do I hear a motion to accept and place that on file?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Motion by Barlow, supported by McLean, to accept and place the March 13, 2024 Riverside Cemetery Preservation Advisory Board Minutes on file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Public comment. Ken, anything to add tonight?
Well, not really.
How about you at that podium to let us know what's going on with you?
All right. So, we can be heard. You know, I don't really have any comments. I've been living here since 1979, never been to a meeting. I thought I would come to one, particularly after what they did to the downtown Main Street. But that's another story for another day. I was, the one thing I was curious about is the place where they're planning on putting that thing on the hill at the cemetery, which is my next-door neighbor. Are there graves on that site? There seem to be graves up in that area. I thought there were old ones, you know, like really old ones.
Normally don't answer public comment, but I tell you, there's nothing up there.
Okay. Yeah, I've walked up there many times. I know some areas, there are some really, really old graves up in there.
There's graves to the south of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of out there away from that driveway.
Yeah.
Anybody, he didn't introduce us, Dr. Ken Merriman.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me sit in.
Okay, thanks for coming. Anybody else?
You're welcome anytime.
I thought he was running, I thought maybe he'd been running for mayor, too.
Mayor and council comment. Bill, any comments tonight?
I'd just like to remind everyone out there that next, this coming weekend is the Thornapple Jazz Festival, so the city will be busy once again. It's a, it's a very good, well-attended event and hosting, hosting area schools.
Starts on Thursday, doesn't it?
Don, any comments tonight?
Nope.
Glad to be here.
Glad to have you.
Glad to be here.
Andy? Al? No comment?
I think we have a marvelous community. I think we see the cooperation of everyone together to make our city what it is. And I've always been proud to be a part of the city of Hastings, and I still am, and maybe for the next 100 years, I still will be.
Don?
I just, again, want to thank Chris Beaver for his service, and you've done a great job, and going to miss you.
I really enjoyed the Berry Roubaix over the weekend. One of the figures that we weren't given tonight, there was 44 states represented in that race in eight different countries. I think that's amazing, that's all.
Anything else to come for counsel tonight? Entertained a motion, adjourned?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by McLean, supported by Reskey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us.